Will the special Wadsworth City Council meeting for December 8th, 2025 at 5:00 PM, please come to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Parrish?
Here.
Renesi?
Here.
Rossbert?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Urichak?
Here.
Williams?
Here. We please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Everybody please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to read four resolutions, and then we're going to go into downtown improvement discussion. And first resolution, will you please?
Sure. We have resolution number 25-15 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember David Parrish and discuss it committee of the whole. A resolution requesting the city administration to prepare a comprehensive five-year capital plan and a listing of major infrastructure projects and other capital for years beyond that fall outside the five-year capital plan and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish, would you like to discuss that?
I'm going to, yes. Again, two years ago, they, we asked the administration to start providing us with a capital plan, and they've, they've had the beginnings of it, and we appreciate that very much. But I think it's time that we put a, a end to that and, and the idea of halfway done. We need a funding source, we need a priority list, and also a farther list than just the five years because like the electric distribution line, we did not know, or at least I did not know, that it was needed, and so we could not plan for it. And so those things beyond a five-year plan. And also, I think the maintenance costs should be included, so we know how much it's going to cost, as well as the total amount with financing, if there is financing, how much we, we need. And that's why I brought this. It's, in the next nine months, by the next budget season, they'll have the initial done, and then within 21 months, the two years, the second budget of the next council, they'll have it all, all the way completed, all, all the, the capital plan completed, is what I'm asking for.
Okay. Any discussion? What would you like to do?
I'd like to call it.
Well, go ahead.
Mr. Pre, Mr. President, let me find, I would, Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance, no, resolution number?
25-15.
25-15.
Second.
Urichak?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Renesi?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes. Mr. President, I call the question on resolution number 25-15.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Parrish's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number, or excuse me, resolution number 25-15?
Renesi?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
And Parrish?
Yes.
Resolution number 25-16 has been adopted.
Resolution number 25-16 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember Jeanie Heinz and discuss it committee of the whole. A resolution requesting the city administration to provide complete cost information for all capital projects and declaring an emergency.
Ms. Heinz, any?
I had mentioned this at our last meeting regarding any of our big projects that we have coming up. I mentioned it at Public Ways, too, with Glenn, and I talked to several administrative members here and other members of council and future members of council. I thought it would just be a good idea if we kind of had, if we had an idea of the projects, how long that they would take, the funding sources, that each of the pieces and parts would take, the engineering, a timeline, and, you know, the, all the funding, where the sort, where all the funding is coming from, if we could get grants for different pieces and parts of those. And it was just more of, or less of an overall game plan of what that project was going to look like over time.
Okay. Any discussion? What would you like to do?
I'd like to call it.
Come in.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the three reading rule on resolution 25-16.
Second.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Renesi?
Yes.
Mr.?
Hold on. Oh, go ahead.
Mr. President, I'd like to call the question on resolution 25-16.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Heinz's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of resolution number 25-16?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Renesi?
Yes.
And Rossbert?
Yes.
Resolution number 25-16 has been adopted.
Resolution number 25-17 on second reading sponsored by Councilmember Jim Renesi and discuss it committee of the whole. A resolution declaring that the city of Wadsworth shall not provide municipal funding to nonprofit organizations, establishing policy limiting such funding in the future and declaring an emergency.
Councilmember Renesi, what would you like to do?
Mr. President, this, I was going to call at the last meeting, I decided to give it a second reading, but this is probably easiest of all, because all it's really requiring us to do is follow the Ohio Administrative Code when it comes to payments to nonprofits. So I would move that we suspend the three reading rule on resolution number 25-17.
Any?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Mr. President, I call the question on resolution?
Well, you need to suspend the three reading rule, it's on second reading right now.
Suspend the three reading rule. I thought you did. Yeah. He did move, and I seconded.
He did? Okay. I'm sorry.
We need to take the vote on that.
All right. Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
And Renesi?
Yes.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Renesi's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-17?
Didn't call the question.
He didn't call it? I thought he did. Bad ear, right? You should have faced the other way.
He's suspended.
All right, go ahead.
You want me to call the question?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. President, I call the question on resolution number 25-17.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Renesi's proposal to call the question, will the clerk? What are you doing?
Taking a roll call.
Roll call on resolution number 25-17.
Parrish?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Renesi?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Resolution number 25-17 has been adopted.
Resolution number 25-13 on third reading sponsored by Councilmember Jim Renesi and discussed at Public Ways. A resolution requesting the city administration to prepare a comprehensive plan to repair and replace damaged sidewalks throughout the city of Wadsworth over a three-year period and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I call the question on resolution number 25-15.
Hearing no objection to Councilmember Renesi's proposal to call the question on resolution number 25-13, will clerk please take a roll call vote?
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Urichak?
Yes.
Renesi?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Copley?
Yes.
Heinz?
Yes.
Rossbert?
Yes.
Resolution number 25-13 has been adopted. That's all the legislation for tonight. We're going to move into other business, which is the downtown improvement project. Director Hiscock, would you like to take it from here?
Good evening, council. Thanks for the special meeting, and I think we had a mutual request of this meeting in particular to talk a little bit about the downtown improvement project and get some clarity and direction from the council so that we can properly amend the current 26 budget ordinance for you, so that it is prepared and ready to build for next week's council meeting. So I would tell you that at our last meeting, I distributed a document which was entitled "Baseline Infrastructure Upgrades," and then had a series of pages which included, at your request, some information on each one of the upgrades and ending with a project summary of costs page, if you will, for each one of those items. That came out of, I believe, our discussion about the downtown project at some of our budget hearings that we've had, and hopefully you've had an opportunity to review that, and we're ready to discuss what direction we want to go this evening. I would offer just a, a couple of points by way of hopefully triggering discussion, and that is, at our last both councilmatic work session as well as the stakeholder work sessions, we were presented with three concepts. Concept A, which was the baseline concept, which had a cost estimate figure of $11,413,561. We then had a discussion about a hybrid option, which had a approximate cost estimate of $15,88,631, and then a concept B, which had a approximate cost estimate of $16,955,898. So a couple of thoughts and comments from the city administration standpoint. So this truly is, in terms of my brief time as your director of public service, but certainly in the 18 years that I've been with the city, this is truly one of those seminal projects for our community. It'll have quite a bit of impact, quite a bit of community importance as we move forward, not just for this council, but for future councils and future citizens, residents, and businesses. So I think it's appropriate for us to spend some time this evening to talk about the pros and cons of each one of these options that you have before you. Certainly, none of us want to see a missed opportunity when it comes to, to this particular project, but we also want to make sure that we are cost-conscious to those in our community, cost-conscious to our budgets in the future, and certainly as to what it means. It's one of those unique public projects that have not only importance to us in the room as elected officials, appointed officials, and employees, but it also has very important factors for certainly downtown businesses, downtown property owners, all of us who come together in our downtown for community events. And really, I've often heard some of you refer to it and others in the community refer to it as sort of the front porch of our community, very, very important. We've had a myriad of discussions with our community, engagement sessions with stakeholders, engagement sessions with property owners and businesses, all where we've talked about strengths and weaknesses of options, we've talked about the importance of different areas and scopes of this particular project, but we've all been focused upon what is the best for our community and what direction do we want to go, both now and into the future. I think this opportunity, not only to repair vitally important infrastructure, which is the basis of this particular project, but to address an aging streetscape and upgrades to that streetscape is pretty, pretty darn important to all of us. I think from a cost effectiveness standpoint, we all can realize that whenever we're doing infrastructure upgrades, that impacts the surface level. It's an ideal time from a cost effective analysis to address any of that surface level upgrades or materials. I think projects like this that have gone on not only in the state of Ohio, but in other states, where you're really refurbishing utility lines, older utility lines beneath an old downtown area, it's really driven local economies. If you do it the right way, strategies have proven that it'll improve foot traffic, it'll support businesses in the long runs, it'll raise property values in those areas, and it'll expand ultimately the tax base of the community. I think all of these things lend true to our particular project, in addition to the potential for attracting new businesses to our downtown, as well as attracting new residents to our community. I think it's a unique opportunity also to try to help address some of the concerns that we've heard from stakeholders and businesses in regards to, you know, they're not looking forward to an understandably so 18 to 24 months' worth of construction, what those impacts to their businesses might be. But if you start with something that needs refreshed and you end with something that is refreshed and new and a draw, I think that can help businesses as they, as they regain their position after this project is over. With that, I would say that the administration wants to make a recommendation to you, and I will provide you with that recommendation now. That is, we would ask for your consideration of option B at this time. We believe it aligns with not only the community vision for this project from an infrastructure improvement standpoint, but also from a long-term vision in terms of what our downtown could be. We think it meets the greatest number of project goals. It doesn't meet all of them, but it does meet many of them. Again, it would offer a long-term benefit for our downtown within a sensible investment, as well as a sensible structure for our community and its repayment down the road. I think that's what I want to say at this point in time, but certainly open for any questions.
Okay, council, now's your chance to?
Mr. Hiscock? External, external money, if we combine the two, the one you recommended is $13,300,000 approximately. How much external money, how much internal money total with the 20-year?
He's doing the whole thing. He's talking 16 million.
Well, he's not talking about, I'm going to back off there, await.
Yeah. But you may be able to answer that question, what would be on Plan B?
So Plan, Plan B is all of the attachments that you have on your summary document, and it's essentially the plan that was identified as concept B in our council work session and the stakeholder.
But I think we get that, but the, to Mr. Parrish's question about the funding for that, how much would that be?
Yeah, for internal and external money, how much total will we borrow, what's the total cost for both?
It would be the same as was portrayed in terms of when Mr. Cooper was here and provided that information to you.
He just had a yearly amount, I needed the total amount, total over the 20 years.
With, with the financial?
It's about 18, 18 million in repayment costs on top of the investment cost.
On top of the, so 18 plus 16.
About $35 million.
Over 20 years.
Okay. All right, council, it's our turn to discuss this. I guess I'll start on the end, Mr. Stugmeyer.
I do happen to agree with, with Plan B.
Of course you do.
I think the, I do, I think the, it's an opportunity for us to, to, to refresh the downtown again with, with tearing everything up. The only, a couple of things on there that I would just suggest to, to possibly change was like the, and again, it's not going to take the price out, it will change it. The brick pavers in, in the areas where they're used, I would like to see like a stamped, price on the stamped concrete, I think overall maintenance would be better on that. And the only other thing would be now, now, of course, it would depend upon the logistics of if there's any infrastructure running down there. I could see where the alleys, the, the two alleys that were on there, which would be just about a half a mi, little over half a million dollars, possibly those could be put off until later without any major impact to the businesses if it was done later on. But, you know, other, other than that.
Mr. Renesi?
Mr. President, so I was, I was at all the stakeholder meetings, I heard everything from A to C, which we don't even have seen anymore. But I also talked to a majority of people downtown, and I've had so many people come up to me in the community about spending, and so, you know, I've said all along, we need to do the basic, which is number one, and I also thought that we need to remove the North Park, which is number two. But so, based on what I'm hearing, I think the downtown wants this done sooner than later, they don't want, and what's interesting is I brought some out-of-towners in this week, and they thought the downtown as it is right now was just gorgeous as it is, which I realize we've got lights and everything else, but I've had people here in the summertime felt the same way. So I'm not sure if we, we need to do much more than, in my opinion, number one and number two, so that's, that's what I would be supportive of.
So I'm kind of keeping score, so you would do, you're in favor of A?
We got to do A.
Yeah, plus removing North Park.
Right.
Okay.
And doing, which I think that's what we originally all agreed on when we had that meeting, which is city council.
Yeah, I believe you're correct on that.
Okay. Yeah, now.
Councilmember Rossbert?
I am in agreement with Mr. Renesi, I, you know, we've got to do one, I've said that for the last four years. North Park serves as zero purpose as far as I'm concerned, it's a maintenance issue. If we remove it, we realign the streets, we can increase the depth of the parking spaces. I, I just don't know that we can go a whole heck of a lot more than that, and I'm very comfortable with doing A and adding the removal of North Park in there at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Parrish? And by the way, for those in the audience, when we're talking about one on our sheet, is actually what Plan A is, so there's clarity out there.
Plan A, we're doing the underground, taking care of it all, and above ground, I think we need to address some safety issues as, and backing out issues, so removing the north, North Park area and doing the minimal safety issues is, is what we need to solve, because safety issues is, is I think number one of all these, these things.
So?
So I'm basically for the, the moving North Park and doing the basic, individual, the basic, number one, the 11 million.
Okay, the basic plus North Park, and that's it?
And, and if possible, some safety. I think North Park will involve some safety issues by, by bringing it to the road straight, by expanding the, the back out area of the diagonal parking lot, parking in low, and widening the sidewalks in some areas.
Well, that'll do that. Okay. Councilmember Heinz?
Yes, um, I too am in, in, am in agreement with doing the basics, I'm in support of one, two, and three here on this list, with the recent power outage and discussing the possible future of adding another power source there, and the, the possible price and cost involved with that and the timeframe, we're 35 million for that. I just, I don't know, that.
You're talking to us, this is our discussion.
Sorry, that, that has to be, you know, considered as well.
Okay.
So I'm for the infrastructure, removing the North Park, but bumping out the, the curve, number three here on this list.
So you're saying, okay, you want?
One, two, and three.
One, two, three, okay.
One, two, and three on this list.
Just for the, my scorecard, I appreciate that. Okay. Councilmember Urichak?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to come as a shock that I'm for doing a lot more than one and two. I ran some numbers on this, or kind of just calculated some of the numbers that you provided. You know, so basically with option one, and then the removal of North Park, the true base cost is around 13.2 million dollars. So when you take, I agree with Mr. Stugmeyer in that, you know, when you look at this, I think you could remove the alleys and possibly those, that is something that you could look to do at a future time if we decided. So the delta on that, obviously not financing the money over time, is about 3.1 million dollars, and because this is a generational project, I could not imagine doing a project of this magnitude and putting the downtown back together just as it sits today.
So you would be for?
The only thing I would be for possible, for removing is the alleys.
But you would be at A or Plan A or Plan B or?
Then say the whole thing, and possibly?
You want to do, so it would be like B?
Yeah, it'd be.
Minus the alleys.
Basically, it would be?
This one, option B.
Yeah, it'd be everything that's on this document provided, minus the alleys.
Minus, okay, all right. Okay. So basically, B minus the alleys. And Mr. Stugmeyer, I think that's where you were at?
Right, right. Like I said, with the, you can remove the alleys, exactly, right.
No. And I just want to caution everybody, you know, we're coming into brick and, and that type of thing, we're in a climate where brick's not really a good paver for a sidewalk. I mean, if you've been to communities that have done that, you see they're constantly either repairing or, or they're in need of repair, so I just caution everybody about that.
My turn. I am totally in favor of the downtown infrastructure plan under option A with the North Park removal. It only makes sense. And from looking at the plans that you have given us, it appears that maybe five, 10 years down the road, you could expand one and two and do something different. But to go in debt for 35 million dollars for the next 20-plus years, there's other needs in this community that should be addressed, like the secondary power source and everything. Safety and security has to come first before beauty. So that's where I'm at, one and two.
Okay. Well, by my scorecard, I don't get the vote, but by, by my scorecard, doing North Park and removing, or excuse me, removing North Park and doing number one, which is Plan A, is the winner, and that's what I see this council recommending.
That's some people's answer.
Well, as a body, as a whole, that's what they voted on.
Can these items, can, could we bring these items, can we vote? Obviously, it's important that we, you know, get a budget pass, get you some information to move forward so that you can put final numbers together. But I, but I would ask that these, these items, if it, if it ends up being one and two, I mean, I think we can see that's the direction it's going for the budget, can these other items be brought up as supplementals early in the year, next year, for the council that's going to actually be on, sitting, sitting up here as this project is implemented to also get their opinions on those items?
Well, I don't think that's fair, because we're making the decision right now for the future of the community, as we have for the last couple of years. I ask Mr. Hiscock if that's a possibility.
Well, that's certainly a councilmatic action, so I don't think you're limited at this point in time. What would be a limiting factor, and I'm looking at Mr. Davis maybe to help us, is, you know, we, not only do we certainly need budgetary guidance so we can develop your appropriation ordinance for next week's consideration, but we also have to give the consultant team and the engineers some direction on how they complete the construction documents moving forward so that we can stay on target. I'm not sure, I'm looking at Mr. Davis, how much time they have to react to some changes next year. If, if there were substantive changes next year, we might have to evaluate the impact on the expected construction schedule.
Mr. Davis, could you, would you give us your opinion on this as, as, as the city engineer?
Sure. I think, based on the discussion tonight, we will need to direct our designer to move forward with this proposal. So they're going to move forward on design on, on, on what you've recommended. As you may, as you pointed out, some of those pieces are somewhat additive, that, that's a little bit of a plug and play, and that was on purpose, so that if adjustments are needed, those are, they're not a major redesign as, as time goes on. So that's, that's a factor. But one, one factor to consider is if there are changes next year, it will, it won't affect the underground work, because the underground work can move forward pretty much based on what we have today, so that can move forward on schedule. The longer we wait on, on debating on the, of, of surface work, that could delay the, the surface schedule, and it may actually require us to do two contracts, one underground contract that has to move forward, if we delay too long, we might do a second contract due to the above ground, which has some drawbacks. So just, just if that's, if that's the feedback you need. So just, if that's the feedback you need.
Yeah. And the other thing I'd say is option one and two does not even, basically to Mr. Parrish's comment, it doesn't even address all of the safety issues that we have downtown, if that's what we were to vote on. I mean, I assume we'd take care of some of the safety issues on the North Park with the removal of North Park Island, but you're not talking anything south, east or west. So none of the, I mean, there's no, there's no safety concerns taken into this other than what we're going to get out of the removal of North Park. So I even have a hard time believing that one and two meets the demands or the requests of all the council.
Any further discussion?
I did some quick calculations, and it's about, for the 13.3 million, that's one and two, it's about $6 million in interest. I did the table over 20 years. I may be wrong about, I was trying to do that quick. So that is almost 20 million, 19.3.
Plus engineering costs, plus your engineering costs.
Yeah, plus all that, but the 1.8 plus the 11.4 is 13.3. And so we're about 19 million compared to 35. Okay. Now, I may be wrong on the interest rate, but I went through and did a mortgage calculator and so forth in 20 years at 4% at 13.3.
Mr. President, I would always say it's easier to spend somebody else's money, which is what we're talking about doing here, than spending our own. If Jim Renesi was remodeling his house, he probably would not do the 16 million. He would do what's necessary to get done. But the other concern I really do have is that these numbers probably aren't even the right numbers. They're probably going to be higher. I mean, we talk about this all the time. The 11 million's probably going to be 12. The 18, 1.8's probably going to be 2.3. And by the time you look at all these numbers, the 16 is probably going to be 19 or 20. That's the bigger concern, is we know we need to get A done. The question is, how much do we, how much are we really going to spend of taxpayers' money to get the complete thing done? And it'd be great to always, you know, make your house the nicest house you can, but at some point in time, I do believe we're dealing with other people's money, and we should be cognizant of that. And I'll bet you that everybody on this panel would probably not do the 16 if it was their home. So I think that's really the key. I used to say this in Washington, and I say it here, we are dealing with other people's money. I am not sure, one person I talked to said that we should do all of this. In fact, most people, most businesses downtown said, let's just, why don't you just get it done and get it done as quickly as possible? So I hope we all keep that in mind as we move forward.
I guess I just didn't realize how dangerous the downtown was.
I've asked for accident reports and everything, and I mean, it's not there. There's not people getting hit every day in our downtown.
I didn't think so, but, I mean, safety is always important, but I have to agree. I mean, money is the bottom line, and we need a secondary power source. That's my personal opinion. Infrastructure, secondary power source.
Any other comments? I'll just make one, I don't get the vote on this, but the businesses I ran, I had a business owner tell me one time, he says, Mr. Williams, spend your money like, I spend my money, it was like it was your own, because he knew I was a fiscal conservative. I didn't talk about it, I lived it. So, and we all talk about being fiscal conservatives, and I think that's what we need to do here, is look at that this way.
Mr. President, I would just ask one other question for the people that are listening. How much, what's the rest of the money we're spending in the city for improvements of, because this isn't just it. What's the total budget number? What's our total expenditures of capital improvements for 2026? Does anybody have that number?
Yeah, I know our total expense budget is about 166 million. Cut that back recently, last couple of weeks to about 160 million. I don't have it in front of me to break down between capital, but I'd like to get it.
What's the number again? 48 million.
48 million. Yes, I want to make sure people understand that, you know, we're spending 48 million, and we're talking about, does that include the 16?
Yes.
Yeah. We're still, once we reduce this down to like 3 million, we're still spending 43 million in the city to improve infrastructure, to improve things that need to be improved. So I think it's not like the city is, the city is spending money in next year to make sure that assets are upgraded where needed, so.
And what is the total cost then with interest?
Well, 15% of that is going to be cash, so that's going to be just our previous collections. It looks like it's going to be 2% in donations, career would be 2%. And then internal financing, four state loans, which are pretty good, generally 30%, 30-40% for the state loans. That's 31% of the 4 million. And then about a half will be externally financed, which is about 24%. So I don't have that.
So we'd have to calculate the 13 at 3, 3 and 1/4, and then the other half, the 20, 20 million approximately at, let's say, 4%.
Probably closer to 5.
Closer to 5. And does anybody else want to run those numbers? Because I'm not always as good as I should be with numbers. Approximately what the total cost over 20 years would be?
Didn't Brian say when he was here? Didn't Brian include that?
It was verbal.
Yeah. Yeah. Seems like Brian said it was about 18 on the external debt that was in the budget.
Okay, total, for total, okay.
An additional 18.
And then the internal would be another...
It's just over a million.
Yeah, but it's, it's just over...
A million on the internal.
Okay. And so the total cost would be, I'm looking for somebody to say a number.
The 24 plus 18 plus a million, maybe a million and a half. That's close to 44? 43 and a half, 44?
Almost here.
54.
54?
With the state debt. That's what I'm thinking. Yeah, that's with the state also.
Yeah.
Mr. Parrish, I just computed that for you.
Thank you.
For $10 million over 20 years at 4%, just $10 million, it's 4.5, $4,543,000. So at 20 million, it's almost 90, 90 and a half.
Again, I always want to know the bottom line, you know, not the annual cost, not the weekly cost, not the monthly cost, the total bottom line when I make decisions.
I will say that 54 million that I have is probably higher on the higher side.
Okay.
Because putting, I've already tried a budgetary expenditure to try and put it up a little bit higher than what it would be, so just...
I appreciate that.
It looks like from five to, for number one and number two, and two for everything on the page, we're at number one and doing number two. Okay. All right. Is there any other comments or anything about the budget from council members that, we had a nice presentation by Director Hiscoc. Is there anything that you're uncomfortable with it being in the budget?
Want to go back, we're also spending over the next 20 or 30 years, 150 million for the water infrastructure, is that correct?
I think it's more.
And then about 88 million for the SOS, the sewer?
Yes.
So that's also debt we're taking on, is that correct?
Roughly.
Yeah. I think total water, sanitary sewer, and then storm sewer, it's about $212 million from prior discussion.
Plus the 52 for this.
And that doesn't get you another power line into the city.
Okay.
I think it's also important to realize we're going to be raising rates on utilities as well. So, you know, you start to add all this up, the last thing you would want is to be stuck in a position having to raise taxes down the road. And I'm not saying we're there, but I think that all has to be looked at, not only this council, but the future council as well. The only other question I had, is the 50,000 coming out of the, in the budget for the Medina non-for-profit, is that coming out of the opioid fund, the way the budget is presented today? And did the law director supposed to see if that was okay?
Yes, he's not here today, but he indicated that it was appropriate to use that, and I believe that it is included in the opioid.
Yes, it's moved out of the mayor's budget and into the Ohio opioid fund.
So when the budget's presented to us, that'll be in there, but it'll be coming out of the opioid fund?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Anything else from council, administration? Make a motion to adjourn.
Should move.
We're adjourned.
You are watching WCTV, Wadsworth Community Television.